One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Sipper?
Here.
Mr. Yotzi is absent. Dr. Feig?
Here.
Mr. Freund?
Here.
Mrs. Guyer?
Here.
Mr. Grabiak?
Here.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Yotzi let us know that he would be late to this meeting, so he will be here.
Oh, no. But don't worry, it's later. We're going. Oh, don't do this. Him didn't pay the bill.
I just want to let the public know that we had executive sessions, May 15th at 6:45 PM, May 22nd at 5:30 PM for personnel.
And collective bargaining.
And collective bargaining. Thank you. Citizens comments, agenda items only. There weren't anybody signed up?
Nope.
Nobody signed up? Thank you. Next section is reports. Superintendent's information.
Okay, I've got a couple of things today. First and foremost, seems like the past couple Scotty spotlights have really focused on how well our students and staff are giving back in the community. So I kind of wanted to follow along with that path tonight for two things. First of all, Tuesday, two days ago, was our first ever Senior Day of Caring in the community. So we had over half of our graduating class go around all parts of the district and do certain volunteering activities, landscaping, garbage pickup, some painting, some cleaning. We have litter crew. That was along Water Street. I remember stopping down and seeing them. But anyways, over 70 of our kids, we even had some at the polling stations, which was great. But many of our students worked with members of our community, worked with leadership of our Scottsdale Rotary to do certain things around the community. They had nothing but nice things to say about the work that our kids did. You see some pictures of some shrub trimming here at a local church. I stopped down and saw probably half of the different stations and saw the work that these students were doing. And once again, it makes me happy whenever we can talk more about just things that are happening in the classroom, but when we can inspire and model our students in terms of serving and giving back to the community that gave so much to them as they came through our walls and our halls. So kudos to the Class of 2025, Ms. Colbank, for making that happen. It was really great to see all of the kids working so hard that day. And then last but not least, in terms of giving back, I just want to let the board and the community know that Southmoreland High School, which was led by your Interact Club, won the 2025 Kindness Games, which was a national contest of schools. There were over 165 schools that participated in this contest. And I know our students did certain things in terms of celebrating mental health awareness and creating a kindness task force and recognizing unsung acts of kindness throughout the way. So their work in that competition earned them a $5,000 grant for the high school. So kudos to Mrs. Dixon and the Interact Club and all of those students who worked so hard and so nice to make that happen. But that's all I have for today. Actually, no, I lied, I lied. I have one more thing. I'm going to call Mr. Malavite up to go over some summer food programming information. Mr. Malavite, could you come up, please?
Thank you, Dr. Boone. Thank you very much, members of the board, for giving me this time to speak this evening. As you all know, every year annually, we serve community meals during the summer months whenever we're closed at some of the parks in the surrounding district area. I just wanted an opportunity this evening to go over the schedule for you this evening as it's going to be going out to the public here shortly and just kind of explain what we're planning on doing. So we're going to be using our elementary kitchen production area this year. We'll be moving items from all of our buildings, from inventory and things like that as we draw down. Our sites this year have changed slightly. Aside from what you don't see on the document that's being shown currently right now, we have a couple of closed sites this year, as always. We're providing the ESY program with breakfast in the morning when they arrive for their ESY instructions for those 16 days of service throughout the summer that they're attending. We also have switched our YMCA site this year for their summer camp program to a closed enrolled site for those summer camp students. Provides us a little more flexibility with service and how we operate that site with some flexibility. In addition to that, we also do band camp, as always, which is our last two weeks of the program. We'll be serving breakfast and lunch to those students during those days. The sites in front of you on the document are our open sites to the community. So any child 18 years or under can come to any of these sites and receive a lunch at no cost to them. The Laux Park is our largest site, as always. That'll be operating as normal. We've extended it to an hour and a half this year. We also are still doing Everson Centennial Park, which is across in our Fayette County section. It's a great little park. We get a pretty good turnout in that area. We like to keep that running. One of the new sites you'll see this year is Barclay Park, also known as West Park. We used to do FRIC. We've pulled back on that site just due to some circumstantial things between participation and some things like that that happened with cost and whatnot, efficiency in the site. Not to say we won't ever go back there, but we did add another Scottsdale site. So we kind of have a little triangle effect kind of happening between Laux, Barclay, and Everson. So those sites will be operating June 16th through August 1st. We will be closed for service on August 27th, I'm sorry, June 27th, that's the Idyllwild School picnic, and then July 3rd and 4th will be closed for the holiday break. Aside from that, Monday through Friday at those times designated, Laux Park will be running 11:45 to 1:15, Barclay Park noon to 12:45, and Everson Park 12:15 to 1:00, in addition to all those other closed sites you see. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to fill you in now, but just wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to present to the community exactly what's happening. This information will be on the Food Service website, and there will be a robo-call near the end of the year coming out, as well as postings at all the parks for what's available.
Is there, I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any way that maybe we could get, like, say, East Titan Township involved to provide a place somewhere out there to reach more of the rural kids?
Yeah, so there are opportunities within the program. The application's been submitted already through to PDE, but once it comes back approved, it can be revised and added in. We have the opportunity, since we're one of the, like, a production site, it's, there's two different ways that the program can be run through SFSP. One is as a sponsor and one is as like a production sponsor. So sometimes there's just sponsors that just serve meals, but they get those meals from somebody else. So, for instance, churches, fire departments, libraries, things like that. If they don't have the capability of producing their own food, they can enlist a vendor and there's a lot of different options for that. In our instance, we are the vendor and sponsor, one of the same.
Okay.
So we do poll the community every year. This year, we didn't send the survey out as we normally would, but typically, out in that particular area, we only have maybe about 10 families that respond, over about 150 responses when it goes out about the availability of. And of those that do respond typically, about half of them say that they'll travel for meals.
Oh, okay.
So it's not like we're avoiding it. However, there are options in the program for non-congregate, if you can apply for some waivers. Unfortunately, the mapping is set through with USDA for the way this program's set up on what is constituted as a rural and an urban service area. And we actually are, the majority of what we offer is through urban, so we don't have that option for non-congregate as readily available as what we could. But it's definitely an option that we've, I have looked into, haven't looked into extremely deep, but trying to find maybe another area or a sponsor somewhere that would just want to receive the meals and do distribution on our behalf. That's kind of what we did with the Y this year, making that a closed enrolled site. We're able to produce the food and take it to that site, in which case then they do the distribution for the students that are involved in that program. So that's kind of the model that we're doing there. So if that works well, then we can look at next year to see how maybe we can expand that to a little further out into the areas that we don't typically get those kids coming into the downtown Scottsdale area.
Okay. All right, great.
I don't have anything else, then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malavite. And now, that's all I have. All right, thank you. Solicitor's information.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was asked by a majority of the board to calculate and provide information concerning the amount of legal fees our office has charged attributable to right-to-know requests that have originated from this board. And I contributed our information to an analysis that was put together to essentially take all the different groups of district employees and then our office and break down by their hourly rates and then by, obviously, our legal fee invoices, the amount of money that's been spent on those legal, those right-to-know requests and appeals over this school year and the last school year. And I can't speak to the other categories, but I do know that we looked at our invoices and our fees for these right-to-know requests and appeals totals $6,396.75. The total cost, and again, I, my understanding is that each of those employee, employees or employee groups estimated the number of hours they spent responding to those right-to-know requests, times their hourly rate or an hourly rate derived from their salary, and then came up with those figures, which total $10,183.84. So roughly $3,800 of district employee productivity, aside from legal fees.
So the public is aware, the board members that request these right-to-know requests do have an avenue to get them without racking up these exorbitant costs, but they just choose not to go that route. Myself, as the president, I've received zero requests for this information. They just go straight to weaponizing the RTK to get this info. So.
So I will just add, the typical procedure is if a board member wants information that's not already been provided by administration, to ask either administration or the board president or leadership to provide that information or authorize it. And typically, the model that's in place in our client districts is if five people on the board agree that that information should be made available either to the individual board member or to the entire board as people elect, then the information's provided. Now, obviously, there are times when information would contain either privileged information or otherwise, perhaps we would advise that it not be released for one reason or another, but typically, that's a decision that the board would make.
So what is the procedure when you ask for something and you don't get an answer?
Well, so one of two things. I mean, obviously, you can go and file a right-to-know request, or you can accept the decision of the board if the board believes that it's something that would be improper for you to receive. And I mean, I will note that I believe that all of the instances where an appeal has been filed to the Office of Open Records because the district has taken the position that it's not a public record, I believe, and I will double-check this, but I don't think that we've been found to be in the wrong yet on any of those appeals.
I don't understand that the president said that nothing's been requested, though, how you were requesting things and not receiving them.
Every time.
But he said he's never received any requests.
Who, Dwayne?
Yes.
That'll be the day I ask him for something.
He just said that-
I ask the administration for something.
That's exact-
I ask the administration.
And obviously, it could go either way. It could either go to Dwayne, and Dwayne could essentially poll the board, or it could go to Dr. Boone, who could then ask, you know, Mr. Freund to poll the board. So it's essentially the same process, it's just a matter of where it starts.
Mr. Lucas, can you tell the public who is allowed to fill out a right-to-know form? Who's allowed to ask for information on a right-to-
Absolutely, anyone can.
Anybody at all. Anyone at all.
But what I've suggested is that some of the information that you're requesting that is provided to you could be provided without necessarily using this process and running up additional fees for the district.
Can I give you an example?
$10,000 over two-
Can I give you an example?
Go on.
Sam and I asked questions about this coffee shop student union thing. And I get this paper in response to that request, okay? It shows that this coffee shop is open every period and obviously every day.
That's not true.
That's correct. Why isn't that on the paper? This is false information. I've shown it to many people.
That is incorrect. When I heard that you were right to knowing that, I asked my children, who actually go to school every day in that building, and it is not open all day, every day.
Why did I get this paper, Stephanie?
I can't see that paper from over there, so I don't know what it is.
Eight periods, Scott.
Nobody knows what you're waving around.
Do you want me to bring it over and show it to you?
If you would, I would appreciate that, yes. Very much, thank you.
This is just one example of many.
Yes.
Again, the rest of the board wasn't provided whatever right-to-know information, so I don't know what you were provided.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so this is a study hall. This doesn't say that that's when it's open.
It's a student union.
Okay, yeah, so there's a study hall in here. This doesn't say that this is when the coffee shop is open.
Right here, period one, student union. This is who proctors it. These are the-
For a study hall, not a coffee shop.
No, these are the study halls.
No, this is coverage for the cafeteria if there is an AM delay for CTC students. This is study halls.
I can let the board know that those are study halls and not coffee shops.
Those are study halls. This is not-
Why does it say student union?
Because that's where the study hall is.
That's where the coffee shop is.
Well, they happen to be in the same place.
That's a coincidence, has nothing to do with that that's a coffee shop. That's a study hall.
Can Mrs. Colbank clarify when the coffee shop is open? Because it's my understanding that it is once every sixth day during SSP or whatever it's officially called. Now, actually, we could just ask the actual students that we have with us.
It's only open day fours.
Day fours, which is every sixth day for one period during-
One out of six of the days, so 30 days a year.
SSP.
I'm not, I have no interest.
I also responded to the board in my weekly board report with that information. That specifically said, "Day four."
Okay.
Well, let me tell you what the questions were that we asked him. We asked him, "Who runs the coffee shop?"
Why were you asking this question about the coffee shop?
"Who operates it and supervises it? Who runs it daily? When is it open? How are students permitted to go there? How many frequent it? Who handles finances?" And this is what I got. This was the answer.
This is not the point of this-
This is the answer. This is what you get when you ask for information. So you have to fill out a right-to-
$10,000 over two years.
That's why right-to-know requests-
Micromanaging the school district again.
And how does, how does that benefit the students?
Make sure you put Mr. Grabiak's comments in the minutes every time now. I want all of his comments in the minutes. I want it documented.
In regard to your right-to-know about the coffee shop, I don't understand why, like, how does that benefit students that you're angry at the coffee shop?
Because we are concerned about student achievement and time on task in classrooms.
So one period every six days.
So what if the coffee shop is tied into some of the students' achievement at school?
They're not in class.
It's volunteer work.
It's not a class period.
Yeah.
It is their, what is it? What period is it run during, Lauren?
Still students.
SSP, which is their, like, extra period.
Let me tell you what the coffee shop income generates.
We're not worried about the coffee shop because it benefits students and the achievement when they go to school.
It pays for the cost of caps and gowns, prom tickets, winter coats-
That all sounds like good things.
-rocker clothes, uniforms, and boots, funds for field trip expenses for both the high school and the CDC, picnic tables and umbrellas.
Fantastic.
That's how much money it makes.
Good.
Okay? Why did I get this?
Then we don't have to raise taxes, Dr. Feig.
Why did I get this in response to the answers?
We have no idea what that is.
I gave all of my answers to that question that I provided the entire board with in my week-
And it's right here, too. This is what he sent me.
I would like to finish speaking.
Okay.
This is what he sent me.
I would like to finish speaking, please.
Thank you. Dr. Boone, go ahead.
All the answers to that, to those questions were provided in my weekly board report that every board member got, that answered every one of those questions.
All right, thank you. $10,000 over two school years, thank you. Business manager, transportation director information.
Thank you. First, we'll go over the information, which typically I give you the cyber charter information each, each board meeting. This is only through March 2025. At that time, we were at 1.446 million. I can tell you that as of today, and this is one of the reasons why Dr. Boone and myself took two separate weeks, went out to Harrisburg to be an advocate for cyber charter reform, as of today, I had my accounts payable admin assistant make payments to our vendors. And as of today, we have spent $1,833.53 in cyber charter funding. That is over our budget of $430,000. So that's why I'm going to be asking you later today to do a fund balance transfer to cover some of those overages. And as I had stated in the budget meeting last, last week, Dr. Boone and I have asked you guys to advocate, 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 and that's something that we're trying to lead by example to do. So that's why we both took the time out of our schedules to go out to Harrisburg, meet with some representatives, meet with some senators, leave some information in their offices if they weren't available to meet with us. Okay, in addition, you will also see the primary center, elementary center, middle school, high school, the activity funds, which you typically get each month. And then we're going to go to the budget one pager. So as we discussed last week, right now, there is a $559,000 increase in personnel and salary-related benefits. We did have a increase of 9.8% in health insurance for the 25, 26-year. We have three new grant-funded positions, as well as four new employees for an emotional support program. We did have, we are in the second year of our seven-year contract for transportation. We have a $214,000 increase in that, and that is mostly because we had to add some additional vans to transport some of our kids to outplaced facilities. We have additional $90,000 in educational impact. Due to the lack of curriculum that was here in prior years and to keep our technology up to date, we currently had $450,000 in the general fund budget. We upped it this year with an additional $90,000. Our GISA project, which we've talked about and should be receiving the funds and working on the closing of, on May 29th this fiscal year, then we'll get all the paperwork associated with that. We will have an increase of debt service of $635,000. However, we are projected, actually guaranteed, to save $374,000 in energy savings once the GISA project has been completed. Cyber charter school impact, now, these are numbers that came from the state. The numbers that I'm giving you today are, that I provided you in the printouts today are all actual numbers from our district as of today. But the charter school impact from the state said it was $1.272 million over the past 10 years. It's going to obviously surpass that by quite a bit, being that we're at $1.8 million right now, because they did make some changing, changes to the PDE 363 last year. Unfunded mandates and requirements, over $2.4 million, and that's in the past 10 years, and that data also came from the state. We can tell you, we're looking at our projected expenditures, and I have them written down on a, because that's a little bit tiny. So we are the fourth lowest increase in expenditures over this, over the past 10 years in our county. And one thing that I can tell you is, except for two discretionary line items, which is the high school because they added some additional classes, and athletics because they also added an additional sport, everyone else's discretionary spending has been held flat by me for four years. Trust me, that doesn't make me very popular, but I know that it is something that needed to be done, so that's where we are with that. As you can see, salaries are 37.5%, I believe that's five or six percent of our budget. Benefits are 27.7%. The next highest is other purchase services, and obviously, debt service at 6.9%. In regard to our projected revenues, we have, oh, and one other thing I did want to mention, we have the fifth lowest per pupil expenditure in Westmoreland County. We're eight percent lower than the county average, and I think that takes worth noting. Our projected revenues, we are more heavily funded via state revenues, which is one of the reasons why, once again, we are in touch with our, with our local representatives to try to get their ear and get some more funds for our district. We are funded 55.2% via state, local is 42.7, and federal is now down to 2.1. That was higher in the past several years, but now the ESRS funding is now gone. Budget fast facts. The budget that we are presenting tonight for your consideration is a balanced budget, and the expended, budgeted expenses is $37,104,532.52, as well as the revenues. And like I said, it is a balanced budget. And the part of the reason why it went up from the last month is because we looked in talking with some of the legislators in Harrisburg, felt a little more confident that we could put some additional adequacy funding into the budget. So therefore, some of the things that we had taken out before that we, that we thought we were, could have cut, you know, we put them back, and because they were truly needed, we were just cutting out of dire necessity, to be quite honest. So with that being said, that would be a maximum tax, that would be a tax increase of 1.99 mils for Westmoreland County, and that would be a tax increase of .06587 mils in Fayette County, which yields us an additional $270,000 in revenue. Like I said, this is basically the same information that I provided last week to the board and to other members that had joined us that evening. That's basically where I am with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. And I believe that's it for my report.
All right, Pam, thank you.
You're welcome.
CWCTC report. It's Mr. Yotzi, right?
Yeah, it's Mr. Yotzi.
Yep, he's not here. WIU report.
The last meeting held at the IU was on 4/22/25. There were 13 members present and four absent. The audit was done by the same people who do ours, the attorney, Robertson Associates. The fund balance is $4,598,640, and it has literally gone unchanged since 2019. Back then, it was $4,767,130. So that fund balance has not been used for any of these expenses. There was a $50-some-thousand deficit, but they have, they look into their regular budget and cover those issues. Dr. Conway's evaluation is due, and the way the IU does it, they mail out evaluation forms with a self-addressed stamped envelope for the board to complete and return. Another issue that was brought up, and it had been brought up many, many, many times, was that the board do a self-evaluation. So there is a PSBA self-evaluation tool called Principles for Governance and Leadership. So this summer, we are going to, I think it comes, we're going to get it in July, and we're going to use this self, this board self-evaluation. They want to know if the board leads responsibly, acts ethically, plans thoughtfully, evaluates continuously, communicates clearly, advocates earnestly, and governs effectively. So when that comes in, that, that will be a self-evaluation done by the board, how we function as a board. Now, the total budget for the IU is $41,899,524, and it is $55,000 short. At the IU, all funds come from the government. No taxes are, no taxes are levied. Funds are, the four funds are the general fund operations, the special- Funds are, the four funds are the general fund operations, the special ed fund, transportation fund, and early intervention. And we talked before, there are going to be some changes in the early intervention. They introduced the, Ron Lawson, the Buildings and Grounds Supervisor, and he reviewed the physical needs for the IU facilities. And they also introduced two inductees, introduced to the, to the board and to the public. The IU has developed a very extensive formal induction board, induction program for new teachers, and they discussed how it is being handled and who is doing it, and introduced some of the people that, that were participating.
Thank you. Is that all?
Yes.
Thank you. Committee reports. We haven't had a Buildings and Grounds meeting. The next meeting is June 16th. Finance, District Operations, and Transportation, Mrs. Guyer.
We have met since the last meeting. We went over the one-page.
Last week.
Yeah.
Before last week's meeting.
Oh, yeah, that's right. And we went over that budget one-page overview that Pam reviewed. I think she covered it.
Yeah, good, thank you. Personnel policy and academics. The last meeting was April 29th. Dr. Fike.
I'm sorry, but I'm not allowed to give this report.
Who's not allowed?
I asked you last month, or the last meeting, I said, can you please tell me why we were, we were not updated on the contracts and so forth, the negotiations? And four times, you screamed at me.
I didn't scream.
Were you on the committee? Were you on the committee? You were on the committee. You were on the committee. So if a committee person is not allowed, if you, so if someone's not allowed to get information because they're not on a committee, I can't give out this information because none of you are on this committee.
Number one.
Richard Grabiak was there for a half an hour, and he left, and I was the only one there.
I'm a dump.
Number one.
I'm not going to disobey your rules, Board President. I'm not going to disobey your rules.
Okay, I didn't scream at you. Number one. Number two, we have a negotiating committee that handles those contracts. In the past, when you have been privy to that information, it has actually made it out to the public. So, you know, in good faith to those bargaining units, you did not, in fact, receive that information.
Quote what you said to me when I asked that question.
Okay, so personnel policy, academics. Anybody else want to fill us in? Anybody was there? That was a long time ago.
I can pull up the agenda real quick.
Yeah, if you don't mind. So Dr. Fike, what you're saying is you're not going to give the?
I'm not allowed. You established the rules.
No, you're allowed.
You told me if I was not on the committee, I could not have information from the committee.
Why are you yelling?
Period. Four times.
Why are you yelling?
Four times.
Why are you yelling?
These meetings are recorded. You want us to bring it back and play it?
What about policy and academics? Anything from that?
I'm not allowed to report on it.
Were you there? Did you attend?
I was.
I don't think anybody told you you weren't allowed to report on that.
Nobody said.
Four times, four times, Stephanie, four times.
That was about the negotiation.
I asked a question, and that was the answer. Four times.
Dr. Boone, do you want to review?
The, the, the Chair of the Committee does not have a report. We'll just go with that. Non-academic athletics and extracurricular, Mr. Shipley.
A few updates. Timeline of the projects at the stadium. The artificial turf at the stadium is scheduled June 16th to July 3rd. The lights, July 14th through July 20th. The scoreboard, first week of June. The stone wall at the stadium, completed by June 15th. The girls' locker room in pole building is not starting construction until after the last home event. Congratulations to the high school girls softball team, who advanced to the quarterfinals of the WPI AL playoffs. And congratulations to Megan Mihal, who finished fourth at the state championship, in, will be in the state championships this weekend.
Awesome.
Yep. That's all I have.
Thank you. PSBA liaison is Mr. Yotzi. He is not here. School safety and security is also Mr. Yotzi. Mr. Olson.
I.
Can you fill us in? I was there too, but I, again, I can't remember.
I believe, other than discussing the radios, we're getting new radios, there was some other, other items that were mentioned, but I did not record them, I don't believe. Let me look.
Mr. Kiefer basically updated the group about school district training requirements that we are, required uphold for all levels of employees. Talked about some upcoming trainings that are happening, and the upcoming district events, like graduation, that he's, he has everybody covered for. And then we talked about the PCCD 2025 School Safety and Security Preparedness Survey that we needed to turn back into the state. And basically, this survey basically identified what the state's priorities are in terms of their funding, as well as it highlighted the fact that there are certain areas that they're looking for specifically with mental health and safety, where we are understaffed as a district. And it basically outlined that. It actually spoke about the pay survey, and whether or not we do the pay survey here in the district, which we don't. And I'll tell you that by not doing the pay survey is something that puts us in a bad light in terms of applying for other grants. So if it's something that we want to think about doing in the future, it may not be a bad idea, because we are eligible for more grant money if we do do that survey as a district.
I would support that.
If we choose to do that. But that's, that's all, Mr. Olson.
All right. Next meeting is June 9th of School Safety and Security. Student reports.
Congratulations to the Scotty Scholar for May, James Carson, and congratulations to the Scotty Spirit Award winner for May, Elliot Primus.
Our student council just had their elections, actually, today. So for the student, like, the actual student council for 25-26 is President Audrey Miller, Vice President Zoe Welling, Secretary Isabella Grabiak, Treasurer Madison Lucia, and Historian Alexa Pandolo. But we also had class elections this past week. So for the class of 2026, we have President Jack Smith, Vice President Megan Mihal, Secretary Isabella Grabiak, and Historian Alexa Pandolo. And then for class of 27, we have President Kira Bryson, Vice President Leila Thomas, Secretary Cassie Loop, Treasurer Liam Smith, and Historian Gia Van Dyke. For the class of 28, we have President Luke Stenett, Vice President Jaron Robbott, Secretary Isabella Sloan, Treasurer Kaylee Lightner, and Historian Aiden Watkins. And additionally, there were 17 student council representatives added to that.
Wow.
Senior Day of Caring took place on May 20th, with over 70 seniors, students helping the community with various tasks, from churches to the library to West Overton. Seniors worked hard to offer helping hands in various ways within our community.
And our student council would like to extend a thank you to the school board for including us in your meetings and ensuring our students have a voice within our school district. And like, from us personally, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So tonight is their last board meeting as student representatives. I just want to tell you, thank you.
It's been fun.
Yeah. I'm sure.
That's a good word to choose, Lauren.
Thank you, guys. It's always good to hear from the students who are actually in the buildings, living this out. So thank you.
We'll see what goes on day to day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As always. If you want to exit, you may.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And best of luck after graduation.
Yes, good luck.
Good luck.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I guess we'll see them next week. Pretty exciting.
Right, graduation is next Friday.
Crazy.
Our next section is school board. Meeting minutes. The board has asked to approve the following meeting minutes. April 15th, 2025, discussion, voting.
So do.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I am specifically requesting that all the ugly comments that are made towards me by Mr. Grabiak, Mrs. O'Rear, and Mrs. Guyer be documented in the minutes.
I would like it to be documented, that I don't make a comment.
I want them documented in the minutes. I have a right to that.
All right, the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Go for it.
Election of Board Treasurer, the board has asked. Oh, wait, we have to do nominations.
Yes.
Okay.
So you need a motion to open nominations for Board Treasurer.
I need a motion to open nominations for?
No move.
Second.
Can we do discussion?
Yeah, just, well.
Discussion on opening the nominations?
No, I mean, actually.
So we got a second.
Right, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
So now nominations can be made.
I nominate Pam Mondock.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
If none, then a motion to close nominations would be in order.
Need a motion to close nominations.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now a motion to elect Mrs. Mondock as the Board Treasurer.
The board has asked to point Pam Mondock to the position of Board Treasurer for the term from July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. Need a motion?
No move.
Second.
Discussion.
What is it, what's the difference between Board Treasurer and School Treasurer? What's, what's the difference?
It's actually the same. I think, for whatever reason, it's listed as Board Treasurer here, and it's, it's really the School Treasurer.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, if we said no, we'd be in trouble trying to find a new School Treasurer.
Right.
Fast enough.
No, I mean, so there's, yeah, School Treasurer and Board Secretary, but, you know, I think if you call it the Board Treasurer, it's kind of interchangeable.
Okay.
To the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
PARs renewal. The board has asked to approve the 2025-2026 renewal with the Pennsylvania Association of Rural and Small Schools for a cost of $975.
So do. Second.
Discussion.
This, this is a fee of almost $1,000 to belong to this organization. Aside from emails, and I guess you get some literature, can you tell me how Southmoreland directly benefits from this membership?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I feel like this is the third time I've answered this question over the years. But we directly, I can tell you, we directly benefited from this membership this past year, because one of our student, one of our teachers earned a $3,000 grant for supplies. If that's not direct benefit, I don't know what else is.
Well, this is $1,000 to get that $2,000, right?
We're still plus two at that point, yes. But anyways, this organization does send us more than literature, but it, it works with us in terms of advocacy. If it wasn't for some of the trainings, webinars that I've attended through them, I wouldn't have made connections with the other superintendents of these schools to meet with some of our senators and representatives, and gotten some of the data and talking points that we got. So if you're asking for my opinion, I believe this $975 is well worth it in terms of the connections this district has made at the state level.
How does this differ from PSBA?
Two different, they're, A, they're two different organizations with two different philosophies and missions.
They have a different philosophy than PSBA?
Yeah, that's, PSBA is the Pennsylvania School Board Association. PARs is essentially just a group that helps advocate and work with rural and small schools.
What benefits have you personally seen accomplished as a result of their actions?
I, I thought I just answered that.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
What was your answer?
You had already answered that.
In terms of professional development for myself and other people in the district, as well as advocacy across the state level, this is also the group that work closely with the group that help to change school funding and say that there is a funding gap across the Commonwealth that is leading to more money directly. If we stopped weaponizing right to knows, we could pay for this for 10 years.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
PSBA membership renewal. The board has asked to approve the 2025-2026 PSBA membership renewal at a cost for the all-access package at a cost of $13,392.28.
So do.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
This is on policy.
PSBA.
Mr. Sippeter?
No.
Mr. Yotzi is absent. Dr. Fike?
No.
Mr. Freund?
Yes.
Mrs. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Grabiak?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
No.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Seven to three. Wait.
Five, three.
Five, three. Sorry about that.
Next section is policies. Retire Policy 832. The board has asked to retire Policy 832 Educational Equity.
So do.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. You have a discussion?
What's that?
I think Dr. Fike.
Okay, are you doing the policy updates first read?
Yes.
No, Retire Policy 832.
Oh, just, oh, this is a retire the policy. Okay.
Yes. We got the vote?
Well, I think, so, item one was the policy updates first read.
Okay.
I don't know that that was voted on specifically. I think that's a separate motion.
Mine looks different than this one.
And our computers are freezing, so I don't know if it's, something's going on.
Yeah. The first reader is, the policy retire. On the computers, policy first read is there.
Right.
We're not following you.
Which one?
Like, what popped up on mine was retire policy. That was weird.
So we're going to go, we'll go to policy updates first read first. Okay, so.
That's what was printed.
Because that's what was printed. So that's number one. If you're on your computer, it's number two. So E2 is policy updates first read. The board has asked to post the following policies for 30 days.
So do.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I have a question on policy number 718, service animals in school. You're going to adopt this, I think you better read it very carefully. This allows students to have small horses come to school with them. And when a parent or a student wants, has, submits a request for the student to bring this horse into the school, the team, quote, "The team shall gather necessary information and evaluate the request." Then it goes on to say, "The district may not request documentation of the need, request documentation regarding training of the animal, they cannot request a demonstration of the animal's abilities, and they may not inquire about the nature of the individual's disability."
So I'll just say that.
Correct, that's state law.
Well, this is consistent with the federal regulations regarding the Americans with Disabilities Act, and specifically, the use of service animals. So all of that is, is from the federal government and has, has not currently been repealed. A lot of the other policies that have been amended relate to specific changes in emphasis at the federal government level, but they have not changed anything with regard to those ADA regs. I will say that there won't be any small horses unless an IEP team determines that that's a.
Accommodation.
Piece that's necessary for a student to be able to receive the benefits of education. So there are, there are obviously some, some growing pains, I think, for some entities with regard to these ADA regulations concerning service animals. I will say, though, at the same time, that if a particular animal is brought onto school premises in accordance with this policy and the regulations, and is either untrained and demonstrates that it's untrained or otherwise unsafe, that it can be excluded, and frankly, should be excluded from school grounds.
In this policy, all of the page, all of the page applies to admission of all service animals to school. That is where the team shall gather the information, but you cannot ask, you can ask if the service animal is required due to a disability, and what work or tasks the service animal is trained. You may not request documentation, you must not, you must not ask regarding the training of the service animal, up above it says you can. You have to request it, you cannot request a demonstration, inquire about the nobility. However, the district shall consider the following factors to determine what modifications are made, and this is in particular to the horse. Type, size, and weight of the horse, can the facility accommodate it, does the handler have sufficient control of the horse, is it housebroken, and whether the miniature horse is present in a specific facility. is present in a specific facility comprises legitimate safety requirements.
Is there a question?
Necessary for safe operation.
Like, I mean, because we can read this for ourselves, but I'm just wondering where the question lies.
Applies to all animals, whether it's a dog, a cat, a squirrel, or whatever. It says it's the admission of, you may not.
I haven't seen anybody use a squirrel yet, but.
Request, you can say if it's required, you cannot ask, you cannot ask those questions.
And again, your, your beef is with the federal government because those are the regulations that they have promulgated, and right now, they, they are currently in effect. And so this policy is a PSBA model. It's been sent to all 500 school districts in Pennsylvania that are subscribers because it, it is modeled on and compliant with the federal regulations.
All right, thank you.
It further goes on to say that the district, the district must, can exclude a service animal if a presence of the animal poses a direct threat to the health and safety of others, and the owner or handler is unable to control the animal, and if the animal is not housebroken, or the presence of the animal would require a fundamental alteration to the program. So while they're telling you what you can't do, then they want to tell you what you're responsible for.
Mr. President, is there a question here?
And it's one after the other.
I don't know. Okay, thank you. All those in favor of posting the following policies for 30 days?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Opposed.
It's just for posting them, not for approving them.
Okay, now we'll go to retire Policy 832. The board has asked to retire Policy 832 Educational Equity.
So do.
Need a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a question on the floor.
This request was made when PSBA made a statement saying they don't even want to deal with it anymore, and they're not going to deal with it anymore. PSBA said they don't want to talk about this policy, and they're not going to deal with it. So the, the question is, if they're not going to deal with it, are we going to keep it? And I asked Lori about it, and she said in the past, they retire them. She said that's how they've handled them, when she's dealt with this in the past. But PSBA itself, the great communist organization in the sky, doesn't even want to deal with eight thirty, with this three, whatever it is. So that's why this issue came up.
Huh?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
My understanding, it's already at the federal government. Okay.
Okay, next section is personnel. Personnel log. The board has asked to approve the personnel log for May 22, 2025, as attached. All salaries are included, and all clearances are current and on file with the administration.
So do.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel changes. The board has asked to approve the following administrative assignment changes effective July 1, 2025. Ron Haichu will be SPC principal, district assessment coordinator K to eight, sorry, district assessment coordinator and K to eight online learning. Dan Krawcheck will be SES grades two through five principal.
So do. Second.
Discussion.
I asked the superintendent if he had job descriptions that were specific, and he assured me that he did. He assured, didn't you?
Yeah, they're posted.
Yeah, they're posted.
He assured me that they have in writing what they.
Yeah, they're posted.
Going to do, yeah. I saw them, yeah.
All right, perfect. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? SEIU contract. The board has asked to approve the SEIU contract for the time period from July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2028.
So do. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm voting present.
What's that?
I'm voting present. I'm standing from the vote.
Okay, thank you.
SEIU.
Paraprofessional agreement. The board has asked to approve the paraprofessional agreement for the time period from July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2027.
I moved. Second.
Discussion.
I am not going to vote on this again, once again, in the entire process was never, no information was ever given to the board, any updates or anything. We were just simply handed a finished contract and said, here it is. And secondly, it's my understanding this contract has already been voted on by the union, ratified?
You're talking about.
The paraprofessionals don't have a union.
SEIU does.
We're on the paraprofessionals plan.
Yeah, SEIU.
No.
No, we just said that.
We're on paraprofessional now.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
My agenda must not be correct.
Create teaching position. The board has asked to approve the creation of new professional teaching positions starting in the 2025-2026 school year per the SEA-CBA agreement. Pending adequacy grant funding. Special education learning support, SES.
I move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in.
What's usually the grant?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What is usually the grant for?
This is, this is coming from PDE, estimated to be around $536,000.
Five thirty-six.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Temporary summer work positions. The board has asked to approve the summer work program for the Maintenance and Technology Department with an hourly wage of $1,250 an hour.
So do.
Second.
Discussion.
How many positions will there be?
Two positions to help buildings and grounds.
Two.
One position to help technology, so three total.
Three.
Yes, it's listed there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Internships. Come on.
Is there a glitch in the matrix?
The board has asked to approve the following internship opportunity. Seton Hill University Nutrition and Diet, oh, diet, what's that word?
Dietetics.
Dietetics. Dietetics.
Dietetics.
All right. Need a motion?
I move.
Second.
Yep.
Discussion.
Is this paid or unpaid? Unpaid.
Not paid. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next section is education. Student service agreements. The board has asked to approve the following annual student service agreements. Adelphi Education, Inc., Camco Physical and Occupational Therapy, LLC.
So do. Second.
Discussion.
We used Camco before. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? WIU Master Services Agreement. The board has asked to approve the following annual Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Master Services Agreement for the 2025-2026 school year as attached. Need a motion?
I move.
Need a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and next section is finance. Monthly financial reports. The board has asked to approve the following monthly financial reports, all attached. One, treasurer's report. Two, general fund board summary report. Three, fund accounting, capital fund, and food service check summary listing.
So do.
Second.
Discussion.
I do have a question. From what Pam handed out to us regarding cyber charter, will that be put on here for the public?
I certainly can.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they, they are able to see it as well.
I can certainly, I certainly can do that. That's not a problem.
Okay.
I'll add it, what I'll do is I'll add it to the item number five under finance.
Okay. Can, is there a way that somehow we can show that whenever we, let me see, what is it coming up?
I'll make it happen.
Okay. I just, I want to do it before we go to vote. Okay.
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You got it.
All right, are we hitting the pause button here a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Don't slow here. Come on.
It is really slow.
Come on. Remove from the table finance item number H3 from April 15, 2025. So we gotta.
I move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Does this?
Or, sorry, discussion?
And this is just to take it from the table. Then you have to approve the motion. I'm sorry, is this the motion to approve the WIU budget?
Yes.
No, CW.
CWCTC.
It appears, Mr. Lugas, it appears on both, excepted on two and three.
CWCTC was tabled last meeting.
Okay.
We have to remove it from the table, and then we have to.
Yes, sure. So this vote is to remove it from the table.
So on the printed copy, it's items two and three. So two would be to take it from the table.
So what are we voting on, two or two and three?
Two.
Just two.
Just to remove it from the table.
And then we'll do three.
Yes. All those in favor of removing it from the table?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. CWCTC 2526 budget. The board has asked to approve the 2025-2026 CWCTC budget. Need a motion?
I move.
Second. Discussion.
Okay, we're members, right? And apparently, there are nine members and one non-member. The members are, the member funding, which is what we're going to pay, is going to increase by $550,000, right?
Where are we at?
But then, when it says, on the next page, page three or four, it says, actual, the cost for ADM, would that be per student, average daily membership?
That means average daily membership.
It says, it goes from $10,052 to $9,000. Last year, it was, last year was $9,677, this year is $657. What's the $550,000 increase? If the, if the actual cost of educating a student hasn't changed, changed by 20 bucks.
You have more kids.
Yeah.
More kids are going, so it's formula-driven. The, the cost per student stays the same, but if you have more students who enroll in the CTC's programs, that increases the, the budget item.
But it says that's for 2526. It says there's no change. Up at the top, it says the budget, 2526, and then down below, it says, no, there's no change between 24, 2024-25, which we're in now, and for next year, there's an increase of $20. But they're saying that we have to, due to additional salary and benefits. But isn't salary and benefits included in the ADM calculation? Because it's all, it's what we pay. It is here.
But isn't that 550,000, that's an overall. That doesn't comes directly from us.
Oh.
That's the entire consortium.
All right.
And if you look at the number of, of kids, they budgeted 1,400 for 2526, and only 1,330 for this fiscal year. So there has been a dramatic increase. They're full to the rim.
I think just a couple years ago, it was at 900.
Yeah, and.
Maybe two years ago.
I've been there and toward it. I mean, it's a great facility.
Oh, yeah.
They're doing a lot of wonderful things with our kids.
Yeah, and Jason Lucchi is doing a great job. Along with everyone else.
All right, to the vote. All those in favor?
No, 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 no. I didn't get an answer. Because on page five, it says that the revenue, the budget for that year was 11 million, some dollar, like 12 million. Now it's 13,520, 520,233. But that's.
Again, this is the CWCTC budget, so asking anybody at this table probably is an effective way to get an answer.
What is your question?
And if you look at the expenses, they give a balanced budget, 13,520, 13,520, 233. I ju, I just wonder where the 550,000 comes in? Because that's what we're going to pay. We're going to pay that.
This is, this is.
No.
We won't pay all that.
Yeah, that's, that's.
No, 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 we'll pay our share. We'll pay our share.
You'll pay our share of that, right.
But, oh, the districts complain bitterly about shares at the IU, and shares here, and shares there. Oh, no, 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 I hear that all the time.
Well, this directly affects students, so.
All right, on to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Proposed final budget. The board has asked to approve the 2025-2026 proposed final budget with revenues in the amount of $37,104,531, and expenditures of $37,104,530, which includes a tax increase of 1.99 mils for Westmoreland County, and 0.6587 mils for Fayette County. Now, this is just approving the proposed budget. It could change between now and June, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So why do we vote?
So do.
Second.
Second, thank you. Discussion.
Why wouldn't we do the transfer of the unassigned first, before we do the budget? What would you approve? What would you approve?
The unassigned is something that we're going to be doing this year, Mr. Assipiter. The proposed final budget is for next year.
Assigned budgets for this year, to transfer the un.
Yes, I'm going to be doing the, because as I showed you, and will be showing you in a few moments, the report that I ran, currently, we have.
$400,000 deficit for.
Correct. Correct. And of the current assigned fund balance for cyber, cyber school tuition, we have $510,000, $510,807 in there. If you subtract, if we need to subtract the total amount of the overage right now, that would only leave us $80,000 in that assigned fund balance for cyber school tuition.
So we're going to transfer next to money, but nothing goes to next year's budget just for this. So we're taking out our savings now to pay this year's, and we're going to take out of our savings to pay next year's, right?
Well, we're, as I stated earlier, Dr. Boone and I both have went to Harrisburg to advocate for cyber charter reform. At this point in time, I know I'm going to a meeting the beginning of next month with my PASBO group to see what news they have for us on state funding. It is very unfortunate, and this is one of the things that we talked about when I was at Harrisburg, because there were some other business managers there with me, that we typically always have to pass our budgets and our proposed budgets in the school district level, even though the state is supposed to have theirs passed by June 30 as well. That rarely ever happens. So, you know, yes, this is what we're trying to do to protect ourselves, to set some money aside, because obviously, we know that this year, because of the PDE 363 changes and how things were, were calculated this year, we are now at $1.8 million for cyber charter, we are now at $1.8 million for cyber charter, and we're not even done with the fiscal year. So that's why we're trying to do that.
But once again, the question was, the cyber charter fund balance question relates to this current year?
Absolutely.
The proposed final budget relates to next year.
That is correct.
Yes, okay.
That is correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Wait a minute, are you talking about, what are you talking about?
Proposed final budget.
Proposed final budget.
Well, I have something I want to talk about.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, now will be the time.
Okay. Okay, what I have here in my hands is all the materials that we have been given in the development of this new budget. We had presentation number one. Got that one. And then when we got presentation number two, they said number one was wrong. The numbers were wrong. Then we got presentation number three, and they said that number two was wrong.
Well, these things actually develop over time, Dr. Feig.
They said that was wrong.
Nobody said anything was wrong.
And then we got presentation number five.
It evolves as, as it goes on.
Yes.
And that's something that was said in the very beginning, whenever we started the actual meeting of the budget. No, it, you shouldn't be lying to the public.
Here it is.
I don't care what here anything is. Like, you can keep all the papers you want, okay? But what you just said is a lie.
These came from the business manager.
And no, and she never said that, when she gave out the second paper, that the first paper was wrong. She never said that.
She changed all the numbers.
Stop, because it evolves.
It's, no, no, it didn't evolve. Well, I'm not, I have one last thing I want to say.
Welcome to the Dr. Feig Show.
There is one number, Mrs. O'Rear, that never changed from the beginning to the end, and that is the $37 million budget. It went up, it went down, it went sideways, it went crossways. That number never changed. And that's really funny for me, when I'm looking at five documents that I'm told, oh, it's, it's evolving and all that. That budget number never once evolved.
I misspoke, actually, I meant to say revolving.
Yeah, roll call, please.
And it did change, the, the total did change each time. It doesn't mean you said that it was wrong. Because you never said that. You never said that the first paper you gave out was wrong when you gave out the second paper. What happens with budgeting is... That's the lie. As you continue your process, you, I meet with members of administration due to certain things that we need to look at. Obviously, there are changes that are made. There are changes that are made to personnel. There are changes that were made to healthcare costs. All of those type things that...
The majority of us understand that.
Yeah, the consortium comes in and like, I mean, we're not expecting it, we're just budgeting for it.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Yutzey?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Did you call my name?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Fund?
Yes.
Mrs. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Grabiak?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
No.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Assipiter?
No.
Six to three.
Transfer unassigned fund balance to assigned fund balance. The board has asked to approve a transfer of $350,000 from unassigned fund balance to assigned fund balance for cyber charter tuition costs.
Some move. Wait a minute, she just gave us a paper that had a different number on it.
That is the one that I gave you this evening.
It was 453,000.
She said that was current through today.
That is the number that I gave you this evening. I printed out the report.
430.
Okay, 430,000, but you're, you're asking for a...
It's 430, not 350?
Yeah, it's four, it's 430.
Okay, the board has asked to approve...
Oh, yeah, but I, but I only want to transfer 350.
Okay, done.
Right.
That's good, thank you, we're okay. All right, did I get a motion on that? Or, yeah, did I, somebody make a motion?
Not yet.
I think you did, I'll second that, but I'm, I'm going to ask to amend that to...
No, we don't have to, it's right, 350 is right.
Yes.
So what are we voting on?
This number says 430. She's only asking to transfer 350.
Correct, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
She's not asking this...
When you said that, I heard it wrong then.
Yeah, no.
All right, timeouts. Rich, did you make a motion for that? You made the motion for that? Okay, thank you. And then Nicole seconded it.
Okay, can you reread the motion now?
Yes.
Just so everyone's clear.
The board has asked to approve a transfer of $350,000 from unassigned fund balance to assigned fund balance for cyber charter tuition costs. We have a motion, we have a second. We discussed it. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Wait, wait, so we're, she's asking for 350,000, but she gave us a paper saying it's 430.
Correct, there is still, there is still funds left in the assigned fund balance as we currently speak. So therefore, I didn't want to transfer the total amount of 430,000. And to be honest, I didn't know that 430 amount until today, because as you can see, it is dated 5/22. My accounts payable administrative assistant ran checks today. So as of last, on 5/16, we were only a, at an overage of 271,96684. We had some additional payments that were made today, which takes us to 430, 43353. So therefore...
What is the real deficit? I just want to know, what is the real deficit?
430.
The real deficit is what I showed you today, what is up there right now, as of today. That is what your deficit is.
Well, where are you going to get the other money?
There is still funds available in the current assigned for cyber charter school tuition of 80,000.
If the funds are available, then that's not the deficit. Because you would subtract the available funds from...
Correct, and I already explained that last week, when we had this, when we talked initially about this. Because at that point in time, I had said we had 510,807. At that time, we only had an overage of 271,96684, which left us a balance of 238,800. I know they're not, I know they're not paying attention. Of 840 dollars and 16 cents. This week, because we had some rather large invoices that came in, we are now at, when you take the 510,807, subtract the 430, 43353, we have a balance of 80,37347 in there. Like I said, I had asked last week to transfer $350,000. I did not want to change that figure, because that is what I had told you last week, but I did want to make you aware of where we are sitting as of today.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. Roll call vote.
Can I ask a slister question? Hypothetical. If a board member has cyber charter school kids, can they vote on this transfer legally?
Yes, because there's no direct conflict of interest.
My child's in SOLA. That's not in this budget.
Did I mention your name?
We all know you're talking about me.
I just asked him a question.
It's not hypothetical when you're talking about me. I have a child in SOLA because of whatever reason.
I never, I just asked him a hypothetical question. So I asked.
Okay.
Hey, we're going to start with Dr. Feig.
Just to be clear, my child's SOLA, it's not in this budget.
No, it's, it's paid out of a different fund.
Thank you.
I think when you start transferring money out of the school, out of the savings account, I think that's a crime against the school district. When you start paying our bills with money that we have worked hard to save, and we don't know what's coming in the future. We don't know how much of that fund balance we're going to need. And now we're already transferring money out of there to pay bills that we ran up.
So what do you suggest in the alternative then? Not pay the bill?
Crime against the district.
So it, like, literally, if you vote no, that means we don't pay the bill. And I would also like to say that I think it's extremely rude to call people out on their children's own business. You have no idea why my child is in cyber school.
Did I mention your name?
No, but everybody here knows who you're talking about.
I asked him a question.
It's very disrespectful.
All right, roll call, thank you.
Dr. Feig?
No.
Mr. Fund?
Yes.
Mrs. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Grabiak?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Assipiter?
No.
Mr. Yutzey?
Yes.
Seven to two.
Thank you.
I know, I don't understand, leave my child out of this.
Awarding of multi-purpose paper bid. The board has asked to approve the awarding of the bid with the WIU Joint Purchasing Consortium for multi-purpose paper from contract paper.
So do.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Milk and beverage RFQ. The board has asked to authorize an RFQ for milk and beverage for the 2526 school year.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to remove this from the table first. So I need, the board has asked to remove from the table finance item H5 from April 15, 2025 meeting.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now, the board has asked to approve the following monthly life insurance rates for the 2526 school year.
So do.
Second. Discussion. So...
Can...
Go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead, Mr. Yutzey.
Just reading through this, so this, they're holding the rates guaranteed through '28, but this is only for one year, correct?
That is correct. And the reason, we had tabled it last time, was we had a gentleman that was a graduate of the school district reach out to some board members and ask us to do a, basically provide us with a quote. We provided him with the documentation that he asked for, and we did receive the quote, I believe it was on Tuesday, after I emailed him again and asked him for it. He came in higher, so therefore, we opted to go with this, just to give you guys all the history as to why it was tabled and why it's now back on the, on the board agenda.
Yep, thank you.
That was going to be my discussion, I wanted you to state why, yeah.
And is there any reason we don't want to lock this in for three, three years?
I certainly think we could. I think, I think that would be to our benefit for sure, because looking at the gentleman that bid, his actually came in higher at this now, and it's for the 2526, so it would behoove us to do that. Yeah, and it even, I mean, it says on there too, it's a guaranteed rate till June 30 of 2028. Yeah, and they'll, they'll just, and actually, what they'll do, and they've done this in the past, they'll just hold the rate, so next year, they'll send us the same thing, because they're basically saying they're pleased to inform us that they're going to rate hold it. And next year, whenever they give us the proposal again, it'll be the very same rate. And it'll be that through 2028.
Okay, so I need somebody to amend the motion to say 2025 through 2028 then?
Yeah, you can do it that way, yeah.
Okay.
I make the motion to amend the current motion to state for the, what it says on there. Let me get this pulled back up.
2526 through 2728.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Of the amendment?
The amendment, aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now, the motion that we'll be voting on is, the board has asked to approve the following monthly life insurance rates for the 2025-2026 through 2728 school years.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next section is building ground?
Number nine.
Okay, we got that, never mind. Okay, next section is building grounds and security. Purchase of Wright mower. The board has asked to approve the purchase of a Wright 72-inch deck lawnmower with a Vanguard engine for $15,885 from Burrowheart Ace Hardware.
So do.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
I am, go ahead.
This is an item that doesn't need put out for bid, correct? It's under the threshold, right?
Right, but we still did get...
What is the threshold, 25?
Uh, 238.
238.
238.
But we did get, we did get three prices, just to make sure that we were indeed getting the, the best price. And one thing that Burrowheart was able to do for us, and we greatly appreciate, because our budget through buildings and grounds is exhausted this year, so they were willing to hold the billing for that through July 2025, which means we'll pay for it in next fiscal year's funds.
I just was making, I want to make sure the threshold...
Yes, thank you, Burrowheart, greatly appreciate it.
And will they be taking care of any maintenance, will it be done there, or...
That is a better question for Mr. Trader, because he actually dealt with them on getting the quotes.
Yes, so they will take care of all maintenance, the first two years, the warranty's unlimited hours. Burrowheart, of course, sells laser, X mark as well as a Wright. So when I started looking at these, I've been keeping my eye on them, the price has finally come down a little bit, actually. I got some comparisons I can read to you. The Wright mower, both, both decks are 72 inches. However, the X mark is a 10-gauge deck with the Wright mower being a 7-gauge deck. The weight of the laser is a 1,304 pound, the Wright is 1,551. So it's a heavier mower. The frame on the laser is a unibody tubular frame. The frame on the Wright is a two-by-three box frame, 3/16ths, 7-gauge, and quarter-inch plate rectangular frame. Gas capacity is much bigger on the Wright than it is the laser. The engine's a 40 horsepower on the Wright compared to a 37 on the X mark. Warranty is basically the same. The big difference is the Wright will cut nine, almost nine and a half acres per hour versus six and a half for the X mark. With the difference in price being, the laser is $20,000 compared to 1,580. That's why I went that direction.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Calvin.
I never heard so many words about lawnmowers.
You just didn't know it was out there.
And I didn't know.
Wow. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Real quick question, though, to Mr. Trader. Is this like the normal-sized deck that we normally have? Okay, all right.
Next section is athletic activities. No items for this month. Last section is closing exercises. Citizens comments.
I have a citizens comment, can I make it from the board? It's a question that I have for the business manager.
Make it from the board?
Well...
She sent out a letter, she sent out a letter to everybody on the board, and nowhere on the agenda did I see a place you could question, talk about it.
A letter?
That's not what citizens comments for.
I mean, it seems...
It ought to have been a better executive session, probably.
Well, or...
This is about money, this is about money.
You can just, I mean, it should have been asked during the business manager's report, but I would say, why don't, why don't you just let her ask?
Because if I can't ask a question, because it's not on the agenda...
Ask it now, it should have probably been asked during the business manager's report, but go ahead, Dr. Feig.
Can I?
You're good.
What did Mr. Fund say?
Oh, absolutely.
You sent, I, I had asked for the amortization, and I was, you sent out a letter saying you don't have it. Can you explain to me why?
Yes, as I had stated earlier, the bond isn't actually closing until May 29. I will not have all of those official documents until that happens. In fact, there are some documentation that was sent to us by the bond council this evening for, for Mr. Fund's signature this evening. If you want to look on those, you can see that it's dated specifically May 29. So I will receive the amortization schedule after that point in time, and I will gladly get you a copy of it.
You're saying you can't get that until after...
Correct, because things are not indeed closed.
I have a real problem, we got one in March.
That was a bond, I'm, I'm sorry, that was a bond, that was all of a, that was a debt, that load paperwork, and that was provided by PNC, and that was an estimate only. This will be the official one that we do receive. And that is the one that I want to give you, the one that is official, don't you want to see the...
They can't give you the amortization schedule yet, Dr. Feig, because they haven't sold the bonds. They're going to sell the bonds on May 29, so if they gave you a schedule now...
Here is an amortization schedule that lists all our, from series 2021, 2021...
So they can give you a schedule that has your existing debt, and they can give you an estimate, but it's not going to be accurate until they sell the bonds.
But it does specifically list every loan we have.
It can list the existing debt. It can list the existing debt.
And provides a sample amortization.
Right, and that is merely a estimate. I want to give you the final one so that you have the actual one that we will be paying.
Now, they did this one at 6%, okay? And you sold the bonds at 4.13 or something like that?
Yes, so you will, you will see that once we get the final documentation.
But tonight, you voted on a budget of 37 million.
Yes, because...[1550.33]